Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to tonight's June 3, 2025, City Council Meeting. Would call our meeting to order, and I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll call on Councilmember Ronnie Wall for tonight's invocation.
Will you pray with me? Dear God, thank you for your amazing power and work in our lives. Thank you for your goodness and for your blessings over us. Thank you that you are able to bring hope through even the toughest of times, strengthening us for your purposes. Thank you for your great love and care. Thank you for your mercy and grace. Thank you that you're always with us and will never leave us. Thank you for your incredible sacrifice so that we might have freedom and life. Forgive us when we don't thank you enough, for you are, for all that you do, for all that you've given. Help us to set our eyes and our hearts on you afresh. Renew our spirits. Fill us with your peace and joy. We give you praise and thanks, for you alone are worthy. Your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next on our agenda is a proclamation recognizing National Recreation and Parks Month, which is July 1 through 31, 2025. At this time, I'd like to recognize our Tourism Development Public Information Specialist Jennifer Strange and Recreation and Parks Director Tony Law.
Welcome. Good evening.
Tony, you want to say a few words about what we got here? Okay. Absolutely.
Can everyone hear me? Is this working? Okay. All right. So, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Jennifer Strange, the Tourism Development Public Information Specialist for the City of Burlington. And I have the unique opportunity to also be housed physically in McDade, where it supports the Burlington Recreation and Parks Department. I lead marketing efforts for them. So I just wanted to give a quick snapshot of our scale and reach that the Burlington Recreation and Parks provides to our community. So as you can see in this graphic, we maintain over 748 acres of land that features 30 playgrounds, 29 athletic fields, 16 miles of walkway for bike paths, and we maintain 16 buildings. And the reason I wanted to show you these numbers is because it's more than just numbers in Burlington Recreation and Parks Department. It represents our infrastructure and spaces where our people and our community come and play and connect. Okay. And as you can see from this extensive list of amenities that Burlington Recreation and Parks maintains, I just want to give a shout out to our maintenance division for all that they do year-round behind the scenes to keep our facilities clean, safe, and welcoming for all residents and members that visit our facilities. And then, okay, so this is, we couldn't do what we do in recreation, in the recreation side, without our facilities and our park maintenance. So this graphic, this data, represents all of the programs that were offered in 2024, over 440 programs that yielded thousands of participant experiences. So if you look at the blue bar graph, it represents the programs that were offered in each division, and it corresponds to the primary Y-axis on the left. And on the right is the secondary Y-axis that corresponds with the green bars that represents the number of participant experiences. So just the highlights, if it's hard for you to read. Our outdoor program offered 166 programs. That includes hikes and paddling trips, and they had over 1,800 participant experiences. And I just want to note that while these registrations are not unique individuals, they represent that people come back to our programs multiple times, again and again. And I think that's just a testament to the quality consistency and connection that Burlington Recreation and Parks provides the community. And I just want to highlight that youth programs, they have over 1,700 participant experiences that span across 54 programs, like after-school activities and summer camp. And our special populations division, they host 128 exclusive, excuse me, inclusive programs that provided 2,600 participant experiences for our individuals with disabilities. And I do not want to, okay, and athletics, athletics continues to be our major draw here in the community. They offer 18 seasonal sports with over 5,000 participant experiences in both youth and adults. And last but not, certainly not least, our senior programs, they continue to reach 5,000 seniors in their newsletter that they send every other month. And in 2024, they were able to offer 50 unique opportunities that reached 1,200-plus older adults. And I think that's just a really good, strong indicator of our engagement with that population. In terms of facilities, this graphic is one of my favorites. Our politics facilities welcomed over 36,000 participants last year, whether it's for swim lessons, lap swimming, or just recreation fun in the summer. Our tennis courts, our tennis court saw more than 8,400 players, ranging from youth clinics to adult leagues. The Valley logged over 32,000 golf rounds, and it literally leads our facilities as one of the highest-traffic facilities year-round. And our community partners, excuse me, our community centers hosted programs and events and open play that reached almost 16,000 participants last year. In addition, the department also manages 3,100 rentals. And I think that reflects our community and how our community celebrates the big and the small moments here with the city of Burlington. So while each of these numbers tell a story, I think it's important to note that Burlington Recreation and Parks is deeply woven into the daily life of our community. So our special events, they're not just fun. They bring people together, and they support local businesses and create shared traditions among our community. So over the past year, our events welcomed over 72,000 visitors, and that includes Burlington and members across the region. And of course, our most celebrated or most attended annual events are the Carousel Festival and the July 3 event, as well as the Christmas Parade. And while it may seem that some of these events are not well-attended, they are because of, they're tailored to specific audiences. And I think that's a strong indicator, because it draws diverse groups into different parts of our town, such as the athletic stadium and our downtown area. And this is just my final slide. So I think, as you can see here, it takes a strong, dedicated team to make all this happen. Burlington Recreation and Parks has 52 full-time staff members who lead, plan, maintain, and deliver a wide range of programs, in addition to 400 part-time staff. They work tirelessly. They work in early mornings, late nights, weekends, holidays, to create opportunities for connection and wellness and joy throughout our community. And as we celebrate July as Recreation and Parks Month, I hope that this brief presentation I've provided reminds us that these aren't just numbers. They represent people, places, and experiences that share the spirit of our city. So thank you for your continued support of Burlington Recreation and Parks, and I hope that you'll join me in celebrating the incredible staff that we have here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jennifer. Very well done. Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, it's a pleasure to be here. And thank you very much for recognizing July as National Recreation and Parks Month. We're very proud of being in the Recreation and Parks profession. We're very proud of what we have to offer here in the City of Burlington, all the facilities and programs that we're able to give our citizens every day. And I want to thank the members of this council and members of former councils that we've had. Been here one or two years, and we've had very good council members all through that whole time. And what we have on the ground and in our parks and facilities and the programs we have are all due to the city councils allowing us to do that by providing the funds to build facilities and hire people to be able to manage them and offer these programs. So a great big thanks goes to our city council. And I also want to recognize a few other people. First off, filling in the city manager tonight, Rachel Kelly. She oversees our department, and she's a very, although she's not a Recreation Parks employee, she's very valuable to our whole system and what we do, because she's with us every day. And I mean that literally every day, either in person or easily by phone or email or whatever. And she's willing to help us, and she's done a lot for us in the fairly short time that she's supervised. So it's in two different time periods. But Rachel, we appreciate you and thank for everything you do. And I also have a few key leadership members here tonight that I want to recognize. On this third row, the two on the end in the black shirt with the B is Bobby Ruppin-Austin on this end. Bobby heads up our recreation division, which means all the programming and so forth. And so she's got a big handful of things to look after, and she handles a lot of our staff that provide those programs. So thank you, Bobby. Next to her is Casey Gurrell. He's over our parks division, which means he's got a lot of facilities to look after and take care of, and he does a great job of that. And he's been with us a pretty good while, 20-some years. Bobby, you been here six or seven years?
Ten.
Ten. That applies when you had a couple. Anyway, thank you, Bobby. But both of these, they're right up under me, and they carry our big load out of our department, and I appreciate them every day and all that they do. And gotta stay out of their way. On the next row back, we have two other leadership members for us. On the end is Dean Sessom. Dean has had multiple roles with our department. He currently serves as our general maintenance director of that division, and he's done a wonderful job with that division. There's been often on issues with maintenance and taking care of all the facilities and things that we have. And Dean, I'm so happy that he's moved up through the ranks in our staff and now head up to general maintenance and doing a great job. We're wonderful to have him. You been in it about a year and a half, or what?
Year and a half.
But he's worked for us for twenty other years, so it's a long time, too. And next to him is one of our newest employees, but a very important one. Mike Long is our PCA professional at the Valley Golf Course and also the manager of the course, and he has some really good staff members. Brady Ollers is assistant, and then we have Mike Hope and Davis Evans in the maintenance part of the course, and they're all doing a great job. I'm going to brag on the golf course a little bit. It used to be, we got a lot of complaints about the golf course, you know, cities shouldn't be in the golf business and, you know, lose money and whatever. Well, since Mike has come with us and he's other staff members, we're almost to the least break-even mark on what we pay to operate the Valley Golf Course each year and what revenue we take in. Last year, gross revenue, now this is not net, with gross revenue, we took in a little over a million dollars. This year, we're going to, if the weather stays good in June, and we don't get another rainy week or so like we got last week, we should go over 1.1 million somewhere this year in gross revenue. So I think that's incredible compared to what Harold would remember some of the other mean years we had. It's doing wonders. And not only is the course performing better revenue-wise, it's in the best shape it's ever been in. And Harold, I know we've been here ever since the course was purchased by the city back in the early 70s. So we get a lot of compliments about the course and what the staff's doing out there. And so we're very happy with the Valley Golf Course. Hard for me not to say, even in the Valley, because it's something you get, but the Valley Golf Course, we're very happy for what it's doing now. And it's the only Recreation and Parks facility that continues to work close to paying for itself. So that's quite a accomplishment. Not easy to do in Recreation and Parks, to get close to break-even. But thank all of y'all for what you do. We really appreciate that. Thanks again to the city council for what you do for us and as a department, and let us do what we're hired to do. And that is to provide services for our citizens that make it a better, quality life here in Burlington. And I think we do that, and we're very happy to be part of our city and the wonderful team. We have a lot of support from other departments, a lot of department heads around here. All the other departments support us, too. So it's a team effort, not just a few. It's a lot involved. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tony. Let's read this proclamation here. Before you step down. City of Burlington, North Carolina, proclamation and recognition of National Recreation and Parks Month, which month, which is July 1 through 31, 2025. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the City of Burlington, North Carolina, and whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and the City of Burlington recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now therefore, I, Mayor Jim Butler, and the Burlington City Council do hereby proclaim the month of July 2025 as National Recreation and Parks Month in the City of Burlington, North Carolina. And we encourage all residents to enjoy, appreciate, and support the wide variety of recreation opportunities available in our community. We also recognize and celebrate the vital contributions of the Burlington Recreation and Parks professionals who contribute daily to the health, well-being, and vibrancy of our city by creating spaces and opportunities that enhance the quality of life for all residents this third day of June 2025. Let's give them a round of applause. Next on our agenda this evening is Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. This time, we'll recognize City Clerk Beverly Smith.
As Mayor of Council, it's my responsibility to remind you of the agenda to avoid conflicts of interest. I ask if there are any potential conflicts concerning tonight's agenda item.
Thank you. Next is the Approval of Minutes, April 14, 2025, Work Session, April 15, 2025, City Council Meeting, and May 6, 2025, City Council Meeting. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are approved. Next has been a request for additions to the consent agenda this evening. Item F, 2025 Street Resurfacing Bid Acceptance and Award. Item G, CAD RMS Interlocal Agreement, Alamance County. Item H, Resolution to Set a Date of Public Hearing for 1316 NC Highway 61 South, Parcel ID 106227. And Item I, Appointments to Advisory Boards and Commissions. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request for the additions to the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those additions are approved. Moving to the adoption of the agenda, at this time, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda with the additions.
Aye.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move into the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following Traffic Commission recommendation. One, remove no parking signs and allow on-street parking on the east side of Peel Street from Plaid Street to Kivett Street. Item B, to authorize the City of Burlington to retain Stout Stewart McGowan &amp; King LLP for their services in the FY24/25 Annual Audit, and to authorize the Mayor and Chief Financial Officer to execute contracts. Item C, to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and Town of Hall River for linked transit services upon the concurrence of the city attorney. Item D, to adopt a resolution to establish materiality threshold for recognition of lease agreements under General Accounting Standards Statement Number 87, and subscription-based information technology arrangements under GASB Statement Number 96. Item E, to approve an annual agreement for FY25/26 between the City of Burlington and Witsit Fire Department Incorporated for first responder, fire protection, and emergency medical technician services effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Item F, to accept the bid from APAC Atlantic Thompson, Arthur, and award the 2025 resurfacing contract contingent upon meeting all insurance and legal requirements. Item G, to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington and Alamance County for the creation of the Alamance-Berlin顿CAD-RMS Consortium. Item H, to adopt a resolution to set a date of public hearing for June 17, 2025, to consider the voluntary contiguous annexation of 1316 NC Highway 61 South, Parcel ID 106227. Item I, to approve the following slate of appointments to the city advisory boards and commissions, as spelled out in your agenda. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the consent agenda is ready.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Those are approved. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. We have several public hearings this evening. I will remind everyone that if you have an interest in speaking in any one particular public hearing, you will be provided the opportunity to do so. Item 1, a public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to consider adopting the proposed fiscal year 2025/26 Annual Budget Ordinance and fiscal year 2025/26 Community Development Budget Ordinance. At this time, we'll recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Peggy Reese. Good evening, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We are here to present the budget for fiscal year 25/26. We have a budget team, which is spelled out on the slide there. But also, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all of our department heads, who, it takes a team effort to get this budget ready, and everybody works hard to come to a balanced budget for the city. First, I'd like to give you just a little bit of update about our economy in the area. Our unemployment has remained pretty, at a steady low number, and this year is no different, at 3.7%. So it's kind of a tight labor market around this area. As far as CPI goes, Consumer Price Index, it's a little bit lower this year, 2.4%, so that is good for the city as well. This budget is back to basics, and just covering what new expenses that we have to cover, like the new debt service. For our revenues, there's no change in our property tax rate being proposed, and we increased valuation growth to 3%. We are proposing a $10 a month increase in our sanitation fees. Sales tax, we have budgeted an increase of 3%. For our water and sewer rates, we have budgeted a 5% increase. On the expense side, we have new GEO bond debt. That's an additional 1.6 million. We are working hard to retain our employees' personnel accounts for 70% of the general fund budget. We tried to reduce and eliminate many of the operational increases in our operation accounts. Our capital increases are covering the CAD-RMS project, paving, and a roof on one of our buildings. We are proposing a 90.5 million budget. The top three revenue items are our property tax at 41.9 million, sales tax at 22.3 million, and our permits and fees at 12.3 million. Permits and fees are made up of inspection fees, recreation fees, sanitation fees, and animal service fees. On the spending side, we've already mentioned that we have the GEO bond debt addition, working on retaining our employees and cutting operational expenses. The top five departments are police at 27.11. The top five departments are police at 27.6 million, public works at 13 million, fire at 12.4 million, recreation at 9.3 million, and debt service at 5.6 million. And if you remember from our previous slide, our property taxes were 41 million. We have just about a million left over after covering police and fire from our property Looking at the departments, we have quite a few there, and it's listed from your left to right, from the most expensive department that we have to the least expensive. Here is our general fund budget in an overview, all the departments with their dollar figures, and our main revenues listed. Does anybody have any questions on the general fund?
Questions?
So our Water Resources Fund is proposed to be 37.4 million. We have basically two revenues, our water revenues and our sewer revenues. Part of our water revenues comes from the City of Greensboro, which is 6 percent of our revenues, and all our other revenues make up just 3 percent. On the spending side, water accounts for 10 million, sewer accounts for 10 million, and then resources that are shared together between the two account for 14 million. Lakes and marinas are about 0.7 million, and our debt service is 1.7 million. Looking at those departments as well, from the most expensive to the least is listed For our proposed rate increases, you can see on your left is a one- to two-person household with usage average of 2,500 gallons, and on the right is a four-person average, 5,000 gallons per month usage. We'll be increasing $11.34 for the one to two people and $12.67 for the four-person household. I do want to point out that the actual increase from, the majority of this increase is coming from the $10 that we're increasing the sanitation fees by. We're taking the recycling fee from 725 to 805, and solid waste from 775 to 1695. And here is our Water Resources budget proposed with all the departments listed and their dollar values. Are there any questions about the Water Resources?
Any questions? You mentioned solid waste.
Yes, sir.
Basis for that increase? Inflation?
The basis for that increase is inflation, tipping fee increases, and also that basically property taxes have been subsidizing the sanitation fees, and so we're trying to correct that.
It is an enterprise fund.
It should be an enterprise fund.
By state requirement.
Yes, sir. A state statute.
Define what an enterprise fund is, so everyone knows.
An enterprise fund is one that operates like a business. Our Water and Sewer Fund is an enterprise fund because we're selling water and we're processing the sewer. The sanitation fees, we are collecting the garbage. We are offering a service. Whereas for our governmental fund, it's, we really don't have any widgets to sell.
So that is now a, solid waste is now an enterprise fund, which has to stand on its own accord, cannot be subsidized.
Our intentions are to make it that way in the following budget year. Yes, sir.
And more and more cities are going to this now?
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Actually, I think in the end, if you talk to a lot of citizens, then you can see exactly what it costs for the groundwater service, and it's going largely in a larger community than it is in the suburbs.
You will remember a couple of, I think it was 22, that our contract that we had with our recycling, we had ended. We had a 10-year, pretty much guaranteed rate, and the cost for that alone went up like fivefold.
I think it was a contract, though, wasn't it?
It was. It was good for the citizens for a while. So here you have listed all of our budgets in total. We also have stormwater, and that's 2.9 million, and public transportation, which is 3.9 million, and our other small funds make up a total of 2.8 billion, for a grand total of 137.6 million. Any questions?
Any questions? Any of these items?
Thank you. We would like to ask Council that they would approve the budgets for next year.
Okay, and along with the budget recommendation, there is also the committee development budget ordinance that has to tag along with that.
As well. Yes, sir.
Okay. So I know Council's worked very hard with staff for months now on the budget items, and I know we've gone through that at a work session. Any other questions for Peggy before we open up? Public comments? Good. Thank you, Peggy. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we'll open the floor for any public comments concerning our budget as proposed. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to make any public comments on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to make any public comments on this item? Council, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A move.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed this evening. I do want to thank city staff and all the support that's gone into creating this budget. We had a, we had a goal to get it to where it was not a tax increase, and that took a lot of effort, and I thank staffs to be applauded for that. And I also think that's also indicative of economic growth and some of the things that has, that we've been good fortunes, fortunate to have those things move our way in a positive manner, and that's, that's always the goal and the ambition. So any other comments from Council on the budget? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve the budget as requested.
I make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
So we have a motion to approve the budget as presented, and we have a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our budget is approved, and there will be no tax increase. So, thank you, Peggy. Let's give staff a round of applause. Job well done. Moving on to item two. Item two, a public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a request to rezone property from high-density residential, HDR, and light industrial, LI, zoning districts to the high-density residential, HDR zoning district. This property is addressed as Zero Railroad Street and is located on the south side of Railroad Street, east of the intersection with Queen Anne Street. The parcel consists of Alamance County Tax ID number 180105. At this time, we will recognize our Executive Director of Planning and Development Services, Jamie Lawson. Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening, Mayor and members of Council. In front of you tonight, we have a rezoning request. This was also presented during your work session a couple months ago. The request, as you see on the map here, the property is split-zoned. It is currently within high-density residential, which is the orange shade, and also within heavy industrial, which is the purple shade. The request for the rezoning is to convert the entire property to high-density residential. The future land use designation of the area is split between traditional residential and business park light industrial. The property is currently vacant, and it's about, just under one acre, 0.87 acres in size. Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend this unanimously at their meeting in April. Again, this map shows the two future land use designations. Staff has recommended this request as it being consistent with the future land use designation. As you can see on the zoning map, the portion, if you've visited the property or been out in the area, the portion of the property that is within the industrial zoning really doesn't provide an opportunity for development of that type, given its irregular shape and size. So the rezoning request really does complement the residential uses that are surrounding the area along Queen Anne Street and in the surroundings. Conversion of this to high-density residential would also allow for additional infill, consistent with our unified development ordinance. You have the item on your agenda for a public hearing, but staff does recommend the rezoning request consistent with option number one found on your consistency statement sheet. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jamie. Before we open the floor for public comments, any questions for Jamie from Council? Okay. This is a public hearing, so once again, we'll open the floor for public comments on item two. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak concerning this request? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak concerning this request? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our public hearing is closed. At this time, if there's no additional questions for Jamie or staff, we will entertain a motion on this particular item as laid out on your blue sheet, I think.
Sir, I make the motion to approve the motion. I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from the heavy industrial, HI, high-density residential, HDR districts to the high-density residential, HDR district. Property is 0.87 acres in size and is located on the south side of Railroad Street, east of the intersection with Queen Anne Street, addressed as Zero Railroad Street, and consistent of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 180105. Motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be traditional residential. The request is compatible with the land use plan, the current split zoning of high-density residential, HDR, and heavy industrial, HI, and the fact that property is irregular in shape creates an impediment for the development of the property. Proposed rezoning of the property to high-density residential, HDR would allow for additional infill development to occur, consistent with the city's traditional residential designation to the south. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with other residential zoning and land uses in the area, and the proposal is consistent with the future land use designation. Any future development will be required to comply with the city's unified development ordinance.
Thank you. So we have a motion for the approval as read. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item is approved. Moving on to number three. A public hearing has been scheduled for city council to consider a request to rezone property from conditional mixed-use residential, CMXR zoning districts, to the medium-density residential, MDR zoning district. The property is addressed as Zero Castle Rock Drive and is located at the terminus of Castle Rock Drive within the Macintosh on the Lake development. The parcel consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 176147. At this time, once again, we'll recognize Jamie Lawson.
Good evening again. So this item is another rezoning request in front of you for a public hearing. The property is highlighted in, with a teal outline. It is currently within the mixed-use zoning district that falls in line with the Macintosh on the Lake zoning. It is identified as parcel L within their manifesto, which basically serves as a large master plan for the development as a whole. The applicant is proposing to change the zoning to medium-density residential. The future land use designation is suburban residential, and the property is currently vacant. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended this rezoning on April 28th with a unanimous approval. I just wanted to highlight a couple of the slides here that kind of give a sense of the property itself. On the upper left-hand side, that shows the property highlighted in yellow with the West Back Creek and the 100-year flood plain running through the eastern and southern portion of the property, so it is fairly constrained. The, the access to the property, essentially if it was to come from the west, is off of Glen Kirk in this area here that I'm kind of circling, but there are existing environmental constraints that connection has not been made. If you recall, a couple of years ago, you had in front of you an annexation for the property that is shown on the right. This is the Greason Lane track. This highlights an approved TRC, or Technical Review Committee, preliminary plat for this area. That was 343 single-family attached units. This property is essentially to the east and south of this parcel, the subject parcel here. Through the rezoning of this property, it would still allow for residential development to occur, just at a lower density than what exists today. And you'll see in the bottom right, the current zoning of the property allows for five units per acre, and through the rezoning process to medium-density residential, it would be reduced to 4.85, so a slight, a slight reduction. This slide illustrates the Macintosh on the Lake manifesto. This is the cover to that document that basically sets forth all of the zoning and the rules and regulations associated with the entire development. Parcel L is located on the southeastern, most portion, circling around it right here, and this is a highlight snapshot of the property, and this yellow highlight, again, just summarizes that this particular lot, parcel L, would be subject to a max density currently under five units per acre. On this slide, you'll see the future land use designation for the property. As I mentioned before, it is suburban residential, so the proposed zoning of the property is consistent with the future land use designation. Due to the current environmental constraints, connections to Macintosh on the lake may not be feasible, so the rezoning to MDR would allow for additional infill, with most likely access coming from the south and the east. Staff does recommend this rezoning request, consistent with your option number one in your consistency statement sheets, and this is in front of you for a public hearing tonight. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have. The applicant is also in the audience to you in case you have questions for them.
Does the applicant have anything they'd like to add to Jamie's presentation? Good evening, sir. Please state your name and address for our city clerk.
My name is Todd Lambert. I'm a principal engineer with Ventura. Our principal address is 1141 Jay Lane in Graham, North Carolina.
Pardon me? No, no. I don't mind.
Little bit different purpose for this rezoning, and so I'll be very brief, a couple exhibits here for where the property is at. It's part of the original Macintosh zoning that was converted to the MX with the UDO translation. But kind of what I wanted to point out here tonight is, is the difference between what is currently zoned and what we are asking for with the MDR zoning. So Jamie kind of referenced that the density that of MDR of 4.85, slightly less than what it's zoned now. More importantly than that, it's, this would actually be a substantial downzoning when it comes to lot size and lot widths. So MDR with a minimum lot size of 9,000 is 80% larger than the current zoning of 5,000 that's allowed under the Macintosh zoning. Also, the minimum lot width would go to 65 feet, which is 30% larger than the current zoning. We did have three separate neighborhood meetings because we had kind of three different adjoining groups that might have different interests. So we had a meeting with the, what I'll call the Payne property to the north. Then we had a meeting with Macintosh area people, and then we had an invite for a meeting with people to the south along Greason Lane. So you can see the numbers. We had a little bit more than 30 people at the Macintosh meeting. We had two people from the Payne property, zero people from the Greason Lane property. What we wanted to communicate to them is this is actually a rezoning so that we don't develop this piece of property as it sits now. As Jamie mentioned, this piece of property from the Macintosh development was to come off of Glen Kirk, go around the pond dam to the existing pond that's adjacent to this property. You would finger between two different flood plains to stay out of those flood plains as much as possible to get back to what is, what would consider the original Macintosh plan developable area. That's not the best way to develop property, would be large impacts to the flood plains and that pond that is there now. So what we are proposing is this be rezoned to MDR so it matches the adjoining property, which is the Greason Lane development. We can then recombine this piece of property with the Greason Lane property so that density can be distributed on the Greason Lane property in, just like it would any other development. It can't be redistributed now because there are two different zoning districts, so this zoning would be consistent with the Greason Lane property, so it could be recombined in that development. Would essentially come in with a revised plan to show how the density from this piece would be redeveloped on the new resulting larger parcel. I'm not the engineer on that project, but a, a quick summation would be some of the open space that they were utilizing on their plan would become density, and the open space would remain on this parcel L. So parcel L doesn't get developed, it would be, become open space for perpetuity, but at the same time, the city sees the resulting density that was otherwise planned for that property through the Macintosh development being developed adjacent to it. So we met with, the big thing for the Macintosh concern and even the Payne property was, was, you know, sometimes you think their neighborhoods are generally against a rezoning. What we found from our feedback was everybody was very much in favor of it because it in turn kept their property behind them, woods, undeveloped, open space. So they were happy that the, the potential rezoning would allow that to stay in perpetuity. So in summary, we just have a, we think this is a logical downzoning. It matches the current future land use plans and the adjoining density for the current developments, and it allows the city to benefit this density without impacts to the environmental. If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Lambert? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to share any public comments on this request? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to share any public comments on this particular item? Yes, sir. Please step forward and state your name and address for our city, our city clerk. Welcome.
How are you?
Good.
I'm David Cadet, and I'm at 2517 Glen Kirk Drive. And we just had a question, if the land were to be rezoned, is it going to be donated? Like, it was supposed to be given to Macintosh as an easement. Would that be part of this or no?
I would say based on the request, that is not part of the request that we're hearing at this point in time. It's just to be rezoned from conditional mixed-use residential to medium-density residential. That would be completely up to the applicant, what they chose to do with it beyond that. Is that fair, Jamie, David?
Yes.
Wake up, David.
Sounds good.
Yep.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Sean Cummings, and I'm in a little bit of a unique situation here. I'm the developer on this project. I would actually be a partner on the Greason Lane development by bringing this land to it. I'm the declarant currently of Macintosh, and I also sit on the board of Macintosh. But to, to answer the question that the gentleman asked, our 110% guarantee is that once the rezoning is done, we are going to put a permanent easement for Macintosh residents to use all 35 acres. Originally, it was going to be just for about three acres for a dog park, but now we believe we can do the whole 35 acres, and so we think that's a huge win for the community. And, and again, it's an unusual request where normally a developer comes in and asks for more density, or, or usually you get a lot of folks, I don't think, talking for projects as opposed to, again, so we, we think this is a win for everybody, and just thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. I will state, David, correct me if I'm wrong, though, we have no control over what happens after the rezoning. This council, this council's just setting forward the rezoning. You just heard the individual speak what the intentions are. Any other comments? None other. If that's all the public comments on this item, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. We have a motion to close the public hearing and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? If there are any questions for staff or Mr. Lambert, anybody have any questions? If not, we will entertain a motion on this particular item as spelled out on the pink sheet.
I make a motion to approve the request to rezone property from conditional mixed-use residential CMX-R to medium-density residential MDR. The property is located at the terminus of Castle Rock Drive within the Macintosh on the Lake Development, addressed as Zero Castle Rock Drive, and consists of Alamance County Tax Identification Number 176147. The motion is based upon the consistency of the proposed rezoning with the comprehensive plan in that the future land use map in Section 4 land use of the comprehensive plan calls for this area to be suburban residential. The request is compatible with the land use plan. The site is adjacent to residential zoning districts and uses. This action is reasonable and in the public interest in that the comprehensive plan calls for residential uses in the area. The request is compatible with other residential zoning and land uses in the area. It abuts the approved 343 lot, single-family attached residential development. If the zoning is approved, it would allow for additional residential development to occur at a lower density, consistent with the zoning to the south and east and bound to the requirements set forth under, under the city's unified development ordinance.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve as consistent with the land use plan. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. I appreciate it, and thank you, everyone, for being here and sharing your input on this particular item. Moving to item four. We'll give them time to depart.
He is. He was quicker earlier.
Sitting down too long.
How long?
Now he knows, now he knows how I feel. You all have a good evening. Moving to item four. A public hearing has been scheduled for City Council to receive public comments on proposed amendments in City Code of Ordinances Chapters 20 through, 22 through 60, 22 through 66, through 22-72, 23-18, 34-180, and 36-17 and 36-18 to remove noise violations contained throughout multiple ordinances and create a new section entitled Noise Nuisances. At this time, we'll recognize our Assistant City Attorney, Sherri Childers.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We initially presented the noise ordinance to you at your May 21 work session. As we stated, currently, our ordinances regarding noise violations are spread throughout various chapters in our City Code of Ordinances, and we have attempted to take all of those and consolidate them into one place. North Carolina General Statute 168-184 is our enabling legislation that gives us the authority to regulate noise in the city, and then 160A-4 states that these grants of power shall be broadly construed. Some highlights, Chapter 22 is our nuisance chapter of the City Code. Section 22-60 is our animal nuisance section of that chapter. We're proposing to strike the regulation of animal noises found in this section and move them to a new section, which is 22-71. Chapter 23 is the offenses chapter of the City Code. Section 23-18 is the section that regulates some noise violations. We're proposing to repeal this section in its entirety and move it to new section 22-70. Section 34-180 is the section that regulates outdoor dining and sidewalk cafes. We're proposing to add a sentence to this section that will cross-reference noise on sidewalks with new noise ordinance 22-72. Chapter 36 is our traffic chapter of the code. 36-17 is the section that regulates unnecessary noise relating to motor vehicles. We're proposing to repeal this in its entirety and move it to new section 22-69. Section 36-18 is in the traffic section of the City Code also. It regulates sound reproduction devices. We're proposing to repeal this in its entirety and move it to new section 22-69C. And then Sections 22-66 through 22-72 are the proposed new noise ordinances. We kept many of the regulations the same. We just moved them to a new spot. For example, many, the current code restricts the use of outdoor lawn equipment, construction equipment, garage machinery to 6:30 a.m. to 10 p.m. We have left this the same. We did add criminal penalties to some violations, so you cannot adopt this tonight at the first reading. So tonight, of course, is the public hearing. We're requesting this be placed on your June 17 council agenda for vote and adoption, and we're proposing an effective date of the new noise ordinance of July 1 of 2025. Are there any questions?
Any questions, Council? So as we're talking about removing items from one section, we're, we're not eliminating them, we're moving them to another.
That's correct.
So I think that's important, that everybody understand that, and by putting them in a condensed location, it is much easier for those that are required to enforce these to know exactly where they're at and, and how they're going to pertain to any actions that law enforcement may take at that point in time. And in addition to that, there are now criminal penalties, which is the reason that we're going to have two readings of this.
Correct.
Moving forward, so the, the bottom line is if, if this is approved and this passes, don't make a lot of noise.
That's right.
I mean, that's what we're getting to, and I think that was council's intent based on feedback from the community. So thank you. Any, any comments or questions before we open public comments?
The term criminal makes it a whole different game now.
That's right.
And for years, we dealt with noise issues, and the statutes involved in this, it's not on our hands, but with the, with the community, this is going to be more than other issues we're going to be dealing with in various parts of the community, especially the residential communities, which is unfortunate for people who are there and want to pace upon it. So I think this is a probable issue.
I would note that the remedies, criminal penalties are at the last use of resource here.
Absolutely, yeah. We want compliance, but if we do not achieve compliance, there will be criminal penalties. Yeah. Yeah. Any other comments? This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for public comments. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak on this item? Is there anyone on this side that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So there is no action that'll take place. We will bring this back on the June 17 meeting. Is that correct? Okay, for the second, for the second reading. That concludes all of the items on our agenda this evening. At this time, we'll move into public comments. We have two public comments this evening. I'll remind those that are requesting public comment period that each speaker's asked to limit comments to five minutes, and Beverly will have her trustee timer, or Haley. Okay. So first, we have Lee Johnson, 2021 Trail 5 Burlington, North Carolina, 27215. The topic is Trail 5. Welcome, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, City Council, been up here before about this property. 2026 Trail 5, directly across the road from my house. Y'all don't know it, but 2009, there was a two-story house was standing there, caught on fire. The gentleman divided the property up into four little lots, sold them off. There was a couple bought the, the house that is on, or they put a house, a modular own 2026 Trail 5. Since they've been there since 2010, they just, they just want to keep their property just nasty and dirty with vehicles and trash and everything else, and it just makes our neighborhood look bad. I will tell you, we've had problems with our ditches out there for the drainage because that road in the past, and we still had the problems. I don't know how this gentleman was able to get a three-bay garage put on his property from the planning department, City of Burlington. It looks like crap, entire neighborhood. I've never seen it in my life. All the houses in the trails are residential housing, but this garage, it's got the mazzer here, and the garage stands straight out towards the road, three-bay garage. The man ain't painting the garage, it's all black metal. I don't know anything about permits. I know he came in and put dirt in there. No footing was put in there. Concrete was poured on top of the dirt, and the garage was put on top of the concrete. There's no drainage on the building whatsoever. The neighbors beside him, I feel sorry for them, because you know why? They had to go and spend probably $1,000 to get drainage for their house because water was coming off that garage and off the side of the property because the guy had built the garage up higher. So therefore, the water's running off on his side of the. So therefore, the water's running off on his side of his property. So he's had to go and call somebody in to put drainage in so the water won't go under his house. The gentleman has commercial property in the City of Burlington. I don't know where, but he does. We're tired of the junk that he parks at his, you know, his property. I don't know if there's a law in the City of Burlington about too many vehicles being in somebody's property or driveway, but I tell you, something needs to be done. This man got too many vehicles, jet skis, Jeeps. He had a couple other Jeeps, and I've got some pictures I want to show you. I'll tell you, the neighbors has asked him to sort of clean it up. He said, "This is my property, I'm doing what I want to do." And about two weeks ago, the lady across the street from me asked the gentleman, said he was parking his truck out, his big commercial truck out on the, on the road in the ditch where we have drainage problems now, asked him if he would move his truck because it's difficult for them to get out of their driveway to see people coming down Trail Five. He said, "Well, Mayor, I'm not moving my truck. This is my property. I'm not leaving trucks sitting there." So they don't get along anymore. But anyhow, I'm going to show you a picture of the garage, and I'm going to show you the commercial trailer that he's got that is about thirty-five foot long, and it looks terrible. I mean, I got to look up and wake up and look at this every morning, but that's, that's that part. The garage just sticks out like a, I don't know how I passed through the planning department, how I got it put in. I'd like somebody to come and help it approve. The neighbors don't like it, and the neighbor across the street from me, he doesn't like it, because it makes his property look bad. Here's a picture of a vehicle, or some, in his yard and so forth.
Mr. Johnson, that is your five minutes. If you could respectfully wrap up your comments, we would appreciate it.
Okay. Here's some old pictures I would like you to look. That's the commercial truck out in the ditch. That's a truck and a boat that he parks out in the driveway on the, on the street. Here's enough pictures of the cars and vehicles we have. There's a good picture of the trailer that he parked outside that he used to put on the commercial truck. The neighbors just upset. We, we were, we probably, all, all four or five of us were for this blue cost, this property. We all sit there and look at it, and he's the only one on the whole block that's causing a problem. We just need it cleaned up, so I might do something about it. If we can't, we just, you know, let everybody lose their yards, everybody, you know. He's had more complaints against him about his yard, not having a load, and vehicles in the yard, by, by code enforcement, and it continues on. So I'm just, I'm, I'm just going to y'all, see if we got any way we can fix something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Certainly, with this particular item, we've talked about permitting and code enforcement inspections. I think a lot of it's wrapped up in the one. David, would it be reasonable for you and Jamie to get together and kind of review this?
Very much so. Mr. Mayor and Council, we have already had an opportunity, this was reserved yesterday, and I believe Mr. Ward and Mr. Ward have already been there to take a look at this. And right now, he has, he has two violations against him with code enforcement. I think his remedy, one pertaining to the high grass, that may not be the first high grass, but he's also got one regarding junk vehicles on the shop that's being addressed right now. I think he has until...
He has about twenty days to still get it compliant to it.
To remedy that. And then the permit on that, on that garage, yes, that garage is a metal building, and I don't, yeah, I think the permit is still open. I don't think he's asked for any additional inspections to turn around and get it closed out. So we'll follow up tomorrow morning with Russell Wick, who's going to permit the car. I will say to you about the parking, because she's done, she has done such a good job on the noise ordinance. Ms. Childers is in the process of taking on the parking ordinances that we have, and we're going to bring that to the public conference in a month. And so the problems are just what he's talking about right here. So we now might have all the tools in the toolkit right now, but we'll be bringing those to you in a few days.
The last time Mr. Johnson was here was at the same house?
Yes, sir. His can, his can, about the yard and, and the Jeeps that he had, and plus the ditches because my side of the road gets the blunt of the water in front of the rain. And one of the issues I had on the first time was there's three driveways that does not have drain pipes on these driveways. You know, why should we take the blunt of the water on our side of the road?
What appears to be is that the more impervious surface this twenty-twenty-six puts on is the road, water is coming off the top of the impervious surface and coming down in the ditch in front of it, and there's no way for it to go laterally, so it comes across the road and onto this main property.
Seems like to me that road is narrow to be anyway, so if that guy parks that big truck out there and that trailer out there, how do they get around it?
The truck is parked, you know, I've been out there a couple times. It's either over the ditch, or it's, if you call it a ditch, or it's, it's a big truck. So it is, it's a narrow street, and its visibility, which you're saying, it's got to be difficult and a bunch of people navigating that whole area there. You know, the thing that I know, so I'm not sure about kids out there, but if the kids come out behind that truck down the road, that's, that would be a real tough situation.
Agreed.
Pick up on that. I mean, I've been out there and looked at it. It's, it's dangerous, sticks when that truck is out there trying to go around. Very dangerous.
I called City of Burlington Police, and they said they couldn't do anything about it.
You understand, I think you... We will, we will address it accordingly.
Thank you.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next public comment this evening. Louis Baber, fifty-two fifty, Sartor Road, Burlington, concerning sign and banner ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Louis Baber. I'm a senior pastor at Glen Hope Baptist Church, nine-eleven North Avenue. Glen Hope has existed for ninety-eight years at the corner of North Avenue and Graham, just down the street from the City Base Falls Stadium and directly across the street from Burlington Industries Pioneer Plant. For all of its existence, Glen Hope has been a beacon of light and hope in East Burlington. I can't speak to all of the history of our church, but I can speak to the last seven years of Glen Hope that I've been there, serving as a community partner in East Burlington. Over the last seven years, we've embraced the idea that the East Burlington community that we are planted in as a church is not just where our physical location is, but it is our neighborhood. It's our community. And embracing that thinking has led us to want to be the absolute best neighbor and community partner in East Burlington. We've done several things to show our love for our community. For the last seven football seasons, we fed the Cummings Football Team before every one of their home games. Our volunteers serve as the down and distance crew and serve in the concession stand. We hosted athletic award banquet, free pre-prom dinners. We fed the teachers and staff multiple times. We reseeded the outfield of the softball and baseball fields in the last couple of years, hoping to gain some momentum, create some momentum for them to be able to build teams again. For the last three years, we've hosted after-school English classes for Hispanic students needing to hone their language skills. We've invested countless hours and dollars into our Hope Lives at Cummings initiative. In the broader community, we host ESL classes for adults. We operate a food pantry. During the pandemic, we gave away nearly ten thousand food boxes and meals in our community. We operate a fostering hope clothes closet for foster families. Your police department and your Parks and Rec Department routinely use our parking lot as a staging area for command centers and overflow parking for big events, big events at the baseball stadium. We host four to five, four to five community nights each year where we, where we invite our church neighbors to come together for a cookout and time to get to know each other. We host a national night out each year, each August. I think some of you have come by. This brings me to my point. When we host our community nights, our national night outs, vacation Bible school, and other community events, typically six to eight times a year I'm talking about, we find it helpful to hang banners on our campus in the week leading up to the event to let our neighbors know that something good is about to happen in the neighborhood. We put our banners up and take them down in time frame of about ten days around each event. Unfortunately, your assigned ordinance and your code enforcement officer see our banners as a great menace to our community. Your ordinance allows for us to hang one banner per calendar year, since we need to do more than that, and we do, I guess it's civil disobedience, so it's what we're dealing. But since we do more than one, your code enforcement officer is just doing his job. He's a fine young man, but he's telling us that he's going to start finding us. I hope that I've not misread our position, that we are valuable community partners, and that you will find a way to grant us an exception to the ordinance, change to the ordinance or leave somewhere off the books, make its way down to the code enforcement guy to look the other way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate those comments. I would like to add, he probably does not think it's a menace, but he is doing his job.
I understand.
So on one hand, we hear we're not doing enough, and on the other hand, we hear we're doing too much. So welcome, welcome to municipal government, but we will absolutely talk quietly about what we can do to assist you with that. Along the way, David, you're going to have to fix that one, too.
I heard you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate you being here. That is all of our public comments this period, this evening. At this time, we'll move to city council comments. I have a couple of announcements to make. The Aliments Chamber is going to be hosting a ribbon cutting Morrotown Community Group Playground and Garden at the corner of Clay Street and Mevin Street, and that is tomorrow. Is that right?
Yes.
Beverly? From eleven to twelve, eleven a.m. to twelve p.m. The Sock Puppets have their opening weekend this weekend, June fifth through seventh. Gates do open at six p.m. There will maybe overflow parking at Glen Hope Baptist Church, if I'm not wrong. Games do start at seven. Our Juneteenth celebration is June thirteenth at Mako Bigelow Community Center at North Park. That's from six to eight p.m. And then we have our concerts in the park, June thirteenth, at the Jimmy Combs Stage from seven to nine p.m. That's all that I have that's been brought to my attention. Any other council comments this evening?
We won't let anybody who parks in the area get, get, mess up if you're trying to pay our property, I promise you that. But it's, that's an unusual, that's a, that's a different situation you're facing there. That's, that takes some thought to try to make that work very well.
I got some ideas I can share with you. Any other council comments this evening? I do want to appreciate, thank you both for being here this evening and sharing those comments. Thank you again, city staff, for our budget and all the work that went forth with that. Thank you, Peggy. And Rachel, you did a great job.
Mayor, I'm going to ask that you vote to go into closed session at this time. So against EGS one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight four, discuss matters pertaining to locations or expansion of industries or other businesses in the areas served by the City of Burlington, including agreement on our tentative list of economic development incentives, and with the all of the city council negotiations pursuant to EGS one eighty-eight and seven.
Okay, we have a request to enter closed session. Is there a motion to do so?
So Louis.
Have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to enter into closed session. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we are moving into closed session. Ronnie, I'm trying to move on through. I didn't think you'd catch me.
I tried to, but I'm not able to. I'll stick here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. 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 Yeah.
Well, hi.
I'll just speak a little longer.
Good, good. I did the charge.
She's just giving a press statement.
Okay.
We're going to entertain a motion to go back to an open session.
No move.
No move.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any pose. We are in open session. At this time, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, man.